Just in case?
Pardon?
Just in case.
Just give the some of the other board members a chance to show up.
Do they typically say, you know, I can't make it tonight or? Yeah, sometimes they talk to Jim.
Yeah, no one has called me to say they wouldn't be here.
And sometimes people just come in.
Late.
Five minutes late, ten minutes late because of whatever.
Traffic.
Traffic, that's it. We're getting a Wednesday night rush hour here.
Absolutely.
Why they just talk about the plan for the meeting?
Jim?
Yeah?
I got a text from Steve Noseworthy. He's having a, he had his hip replaced last week and he's having a tough time tonight getting comfortable, so he won't make it tonight.
Okay, we'll put him down as excused.
Hey Jane?
Yes?
Can you check the cord running by Paul to make sure it's not coming apart, the microphone's cutting in and out?
No, it's pretty good.
Okay. Maybe it's just the internet.
It may be Ron, because the recording that I was doing my minutes from, it had that same very washed sound. Everything is plugged in and good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, whenever you're ready. All right, let's call the meeting to order, please. Let's see, Mark Irvin hasn't signed. Oh, there he is, there he is, okay. Joe Shinad, Steve Noseworthy is excused, Paul will be seated tonight. Can we identify those participating via Zoom? I can do one.
Okay. Participating via Zoom is Mark Irman, Butch Burbank, Ron Spear, and David Boden. Is that it?
That's it, that's all I see.
Okay.
All right, so first item on the agenda is the meeting minutes from July 22nd, 2020. Does anyone have anything?
Um, just on line 149. It says Mr. Schofield's letter is attached, and I just want to be sure that the one that's in our packet is not the one that's attached to these minutes. That was a different letter, correct?
Oh, I thought this was the one.
No, this is.
No, because this is sent after the meeting, that they weren't happy.
Yeah, it's sent after the meeting.
The minutes were before we made a decision.
Oh, okay, so it's a different letter.
He did have a letter and it should be attached, it's just not the one that's in our packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
On line 207.
Hold on, hold on.
Yep, I'll hold on.
Okay, 207.
Can we just get rid of the word if?
Okay, yep.
So it says, there shall be your bond. All right, and one more. On line 395. They, with the same proposal, it's not present.
Paul, do you have anything?
Yeah. On page five. We talked about the applicant providing bonding, but then we say that the project should be completed later than November 30th, 2020. And he says he needs three months to do it. What happens if he doesn't do it?
And I guess that question was answered. We'll have to.
I think he probably would have asked to come back and talk to you.
Pardon me?
I think he asked to come back and talk to you.
He asked to come back and talk to the planning boards, I was just saying, if you.
Well, that's what I would advise him to do. If he doesn't finish by then, then I would have him come back and discuss it with you, tell you why, or, you know, ask, answer your questions, see if you want to extend it.
Because the bonding hasn't been presented as of yet. That's my understanding, is that correct, OJ?
Sorry, as of Monday, that is correct.
As of Monday night, bonding was not presented, so.
Did you want to put those, that statement in the minutes, like af- after the motion? A question was asked regarding what happens if the applicant is unable to meet the November 30 deadline? And we talked that he would have to come back to the planning board. Because that, we did discuss this, that.
Right.
But I think it was like this, it was in the middle of the motion.
Yeah.
Between the motion and the vote, we asked the question.
That question was asked at the elementary selectives meeting, and I just thought this would be a proper time to talk about it and say, whatever.
Just make sure it's in the minutes.
Yeah, it should be before 214, the motion carries, so we discussed it prior.
Right.
Prior to the decision.
Correct, I just want to make sure that this is.
Would that be a note under paragraph four?
Just say some, some discussion was held. If it's not completed by November 30th, and it was agreed that the applicant would have to return to the planning board if they weren't able to meet the November 30th deadline.
For the motion?
I, I would suggest that it be a separate paragraph that says, following the motion.
Following the motion.
Right, so in between.
The question was that, right, in between.
213 and 214.
Exactly, yep.
The other, my head is on page seven. Where it says. Under 294, 295, and 296, it says, the snow storage was discussed, applicant engineer Bill Walton stated that snow would be stored on site unless the snow comes access, at which point snow would be removed. The snow storage location is indicated on the plans. However, and I thought that it said this, remember I talked about what he said is going to remove from the site? While in the link and plan board minutes of April 10th. On the parking space of snow removals, Robin said that although the number of parking spaces proposed literally meets the town minimum parking space requirements. The total number of those spaces and spots will be reduced when some of them are covered with piles of snow. The applicant said he will remove the snow piles from the lawn. So it wasn't, that's where I got it from, I know I got it from somewhere. The applicant had said it in the April 10th meeting, so it's different than what was discussed on the July. So the applicant did say he would remove from the law, so I don't know how you want to, what the process is here. But he said one thing here, and then here we're saying another thing.
This is just a reflection of what was said at the meeting. I don't know if I'm going to put anything there, actually, that wasn't said at the meeting.
Pardon me?
He didn't say it would remove from the law.
He said it, he said it on April 10th.
Okay, but he didn't say it on July 22nd.
Yes, which one are we following?
We're on, yeah. What, do you want to say something? Oh, Mark, is that, who was talking? I don't know.
I'm not, I didn't say anything.
Yeah, it was me, and no, I don't have a question.
Okay.
I think that, you know, when we were dealing with the snow removal stuff, it was. OJ brought it up originally, that's where.
Yeah.
It came from. And I, I, the owner agreed that he would remove the snow from the lawn. Now, I don't know what that means every time, but he's going to lose parking spaces because of it, so. I just like that reflected, maybe we could reflect in these other.
Maybe we should reference the, the other set of minutes, do it like that.
Yeah, just, just reflect that would be removed, and even if we just.
What page on April, on April 10th?
Page 16.
So you just want me to put.
If we, if we just reference, if we just.
Yeah, I think just reference, I mean, I don't want to put any thing in here that actually changes the meaning of the minutes, that's my concern.
Well.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying.
But I'm, I want this reference.
Yeah.
On the, on the July 22nd.
I don't have an issue with that, because I don't have an issue with that, we reference the April 10th.
So it's always referenced in full.
Yeah.
Yeah. Reference the comments made on page 16.
Okay.
Page 16th of April 10th meeting, so if someone wants to see what was actually said about this, they can look at both and be able to see it. That's all I have.
Okay. Joe, do you have anything? Okay, and then. For a new business, page eight, line 332. Conceptual, Kevin and Laura Riere, doesn't really, it just says the presentation. Paul made a comment and just ends, it doesn't really say what was decided, what was discussed. Just kind of drops off at line 361.
It was just a conceptual, and you, you basically said, go to the CPA.
Right. I mean, I believe that, but it doesn't just, you know, drop off after Paul made his comment, no one else chimed in.
Right, but then it does say the board agreed that this matter should be referred to the CPA.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
I missed out the first time too, and I was reading it quickly, so that's why I went back and re-read it.
Okay, then we're fine.
Yeah.
All right, no one has anything else, the motion except the minutes with changes made?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Next item, waiver of dimensional requirements. WDR 2020 dash zero one, half one one two, lot zero three zero, Con, Con, James, Mike, and Joan requested a waiver of dimensional requirements ID 15, put rear setback in the building sent to district.
Well, she's in.
She's there.
Tell us what you want to do.
We, we actually need all the other requirements, the, the two sides.
Okay.
The back, instead of a 15-foot setback, we, we would like a five-foot.
Okay.
Which, the five-foot brings, brings it right to where the existing parking lot was. The parking lot was for the accounting office, for Malone.
Move over, yeah, yeah.
And if we don't, then there's not enough room to pack the car in front of the garage. So when you drive into the, into the driveway to go into the drive, you know, to the drive, you have to open the garage door and drive in, and. So we just thought that it would just be so much nicer if, if it could be. That, we spoke to Dave Rogers, he said. We spoke to, oh, Mike spoke to Harvey LaHoot, and he said, okay. So today I contacted as, as many as I could, and I gave the, the, and for Carol, the. Champagne. Or, okay, Joe LaHoot would be, LaHoot store, he's okay. Karen, her work, and David, her work, she said, okay, verbally, nothing in writing, she said, we're overhearing, Warren, David just got out of the hospital. I don't have time to, I just, you know, I'm saying, yeah, just, you've got our, okay, which, that setback actually is okay, anyway. They, they don't really, they're not really affected, it's just Dave Rogers and Harvey LaHoot. For the back setback.
Okay, does anyone have, go ahead.
Abutters were notified, Carol?
Yeah.
So do we have any negative responses from any of the abutters?
No, they had spoken to the abutters, or a lot of the abutters before, particularly the two that were going to be affected.
I, I just want to make sure that there weren't any negatives.
No, there's nothing negative.
Anyone else have any questions? Joe?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver.
Public comment. Motion, public comment?
You're right.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment is open.
We have to open it up for public comment, in case anyone on the line is sitting here, wants to say anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
None, no public comment? Motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion on this?
Um, no.
Sorry?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the waiver?
We approve the waiver.
Second, Joe, all in favor? Joe seconded it, I saw you, Joe first. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Okay, now, one more. Now, I just need to give you a permit, you know, for the land use permit, you know, like, you already submitted the permit.
Right.
Now we have your, so we'll have to give you a permit.
Okay, and it's not going to have that box number on it, right? Because that's not us, the box.
No, I'm going to take that one.
Okay.
That John Seagull.
Right, exactly. Good job.
Okay, now go put it in my door.
He can, he can start tonight.
He's not bad for his DOT physical, so.
From where?
He has to go for a DOT physical in conference.
Way down there?
Yeah, the guy in Littleton doesn't do it anymore.
Oh, the girl in Littleton, Linky used to do it. No, there's Rodney's.
I don't think you can just go to anybody when you have a PCT, right?
That's why I got mine done.
Yeah, but when you have a primary care physician, you have.
The complete DOT. Whatever involved, I'm not going further than that.
I don't know. You just have to wait for me to give you a permit.
Jimmy?
Aye.
So I get something in the mail, or I get a couple people, I just help Carol.
In back, pretty bad. I go through, well, I go through, I, I sugar it normal.
Okay, so I can, but I can start ordering the parcels and stuff like that, that could just, okay.
In the field, but she said.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming.
I'm happy.
You have a choice, right? New business, conceptual, CON 2020 dash zero one one, nap one one eight. Lot 64 and lot 65, Mark Steel, 87 Edmund Road, Marshville, Mass. 02050. Has a purchase and sales agreement to purchase two adjacent parcels, 153 and 155 Main Street in the Bella Center District. Map 118, lot 64 is owned by Saber Mountain Properties, II LLC. Map 118, lot 65 is owned by Saber Mountain Properties, LLC. Steel wants to explore a number of, number of options for the two adjacent properties, including combining the two lots and connecting the two buildings to get feedback from the planning board.
Okay, so we brought, we brought them.
Okay.
Right across the street.
Right across, if you look out the window, it's right next to Bella Casa Realty.
Don't watch old house in the.
The two Saber Mountain properties.
So I know that Carol had said, come with the back of a napkin, and throw up my back of a napkin, it's a, I'm kind of a perfectionist. So I, I met with, with the gentleman in Woodstock, Stewart, and kind of spitballed some ideas around. And he created this conceptual plan for us. So I've given you two, two plans, one's obviously the tax parcel, and you'll see, we're actually, he didn't show the existing. He didn't outline the existing structure, but it actually encroaches onto the site setback toward Bella Rosa. So we're actually bringing it back into more conformity, if this is a plan that, you know, the board likes. So we actually are going to bring it into the, into the setback footprint to be in conformity with the setback regs in your bylaws. And the idea is, is pretty simple, it started, the formulation of the idea started with the structure that's there. The idea was we were going to leave that structure in place and just replicate it two more times along the way. But as the design came together, the decision, or not the decision, but the, the concept, the ideas. Were that it, it might be cheaper to actually take it down and rebuild. So this, that's where we came up with this conceptual idea, which is the same height. So we were trying to create a visual, because again, you folks are going to see this as you pull out of the driveway every, every time. And we want to make it really sweet, but it's the same height as Bella Rosa. So we're trying to create like a, a nice visual with respect to that. We want to have three retail spaces. The ideas of what's going to go in there are still kind of formulating, there's one concept that I have in mind. But I'll leave that for another day, because I'm not sure if that's what it's going to be. But there, there will be three storefronts, I'll call them, I don't want to necessarily call them retail, because it could be office. It could be something very new. With respect to our, our new world post pandemic, that is one of the concepts we're kind of working through. And then six two-bedroom apartments.
Six?
Yeah. So that would create, what we're hoping for is to help with the demand for workforce housing. We've been hearing a lot about that, and what's that?
I'm just trying to figure something, excuse me if you're up here.
Okay. So the idea with some of the hotels across the way, and some of the restaurants, is to work with them to help keep some of their employees local. Which, hoping also would limit the parking. If we're able to, to help check a couple of boxes, one being a shortage in, in workforce housing. And then having either a one-car family or no-car family, if they're working very close by. That's one of the strategies we're, we're looking at. But also being a mixed-use concept. We looked at some of the regs, and it shows some flexibility with respect to the two-car per unit when you're dealing with mixed use. So I wanted to kind of spitball that around with you, got you folks as well, and see if, if that makes sense.
19 parking spaces being provided?
Yeah.
How many square feet is the retail commercial space?
So he, with my magnifying glass, you'll see that he's created kind of a chart with it. So each of the retail spaces is broken down by way of square footage. So you'll see, one of them, my, my eyes are really failing me, is, is it one?
1182.
1182.
1182, which then you get to the, is it the 75%? Is that where it works?
Yeah, he's saying 70, his, his estimate is that 75% will be public space.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's the retail component.
Yeah.
We should require three spaces.
Correct, and then he, and he goes down and does the, all three of those.
Right.
Which in combination create nine. And then he adds in the spaces for the employees, which creates the 12. So we're acknowledging that the retail spaces would require 12 spaces. And then what we're hoping is that the six units, because of the fact that we're going to be dealing with retail coming in when resi goes out, and vice versa, when the store is closed, that's when the people will come back with their car. We have the flexibility of the one spot per unit. So 12 and six is 18, and we've actually provided 19 on this, again, conceptual plan, but nonetheless, pretty, pretty thought through. And he even went into detail on the lot coverage and the, and the building height as well.
So you're a little bit, you're a little bit short on the parking, parking spaces.
Well, you know, I'm not sure if we are.
The town ordinance.
Based on the town ordinance, I think they give you flexibility on the mixed use, though.
Yeah, well.
But you can have, my intention, my contention is, we go public, just the discussion?
Yeah, oh yeah.
We're discussing.
If you can have offices, it can be more than two, three people go into an office or storefront, after four or five at a time. And figure two people per car, how many cars that take?
So I'm not sure what's, what's.
Right.
So I'm not sure what's going to go in there, but I don't foresee, I don't.
Well, it's only conceptual, so.
And, and again, what, what goes in there may change over time. We're looking at what the ordinances are and what the, what the square footage is.
Right.
The square footage is going to change over time.
Right, well, it changes if you're a restaurant or something that would be prior to cycle review.
So I don't plan on a restaurant, that's one thing I'm definitely not doing, is anything that requires. Cooking. Because I have, if, if the idea is that there'll be residents above, that I've, I've had experience with mixed use and restaurants with apartments above it is, is kind of a struggle.
You plan to put in a sprinkle system?
Um, not.
For 12 units, six units in that, with that type of space, plus the other buildings, that would be something we wouldn't look at. I'm assuming that.
I was getting quarter.
I thought it was a 10,000 square foot.
Three units is 3,000, plus the units is more than.
Okay, well, that's something we can look at, you know.
Is that what the requirement is?
We don't want to prime it, but.
What, what is it?
We can make it more stringent, less stringent.
Well, no, that's fine.
Five-four, yes, six-five-four.
We can't make it less.
And our five chief is in here to give us.
Sir?
Right, yeah.
What?
Anyway. Paul?
I just have a comment on parking that I. In our ordinance, I think it, it allows us to be a little less stringent if there's some other ways to park, some of the people, like I use in Main Street parking. But Main Street parking, we don't know if it's going to stay there for now anyway, so to be dependent upon that might be for extra parking. Might be, might be an issue for you, I think parking is probably one of your bigger concerns right here. Also, as I look at the, your architectural rendering, I noticed a lot of the water that sheds off, the front sheds towards the walkway in the front. So snow and rain and stuff, if that's a front entrance to do that, I'd get rid of here.
Yeah.
I don't know how far away it is from the existing walkway, but that building is a current existence, would be pretty close to the walkway, so.
It's.
And this one right here.
Yeah, it shows the setback on what he's got, so it has five foot.
But if all that snow and stuff falling off of those roofs comes, comes out onto that five feet between there and the walkway, it's going to cause, it could cause an issue. The green space that should take, that's being removed between the buildings is also a concern. We really don't have a lot of green space on Main Street now. It might be nice to have some.
What green space is being taken?
The green space in between the, where the twelve block houses or the yellow house and the existing one.
You would consider that green space?
That's green space in there now.
It's like a wall.
There's a wall there now, there's green space behind it. I mean, if you were to, just want to be a little mindful, I think, of green space. We, I know when we did Subway, there was a big concern about green space out there, and that's why they made that little picnic area out there. So it might be nice to show some green space in here around the building anywhere you can.
Okay.
Water and sewer, I don't know how that works, although this is a commercial, OJ could probably comment on that. First come, first served. How does that work? Is it, with the new requirements, does this, because it's commercial and residential, does that mean he has to go show that the water sewer is available there? Is that, I'm not sure he understands that, or he may or may not, so he.
I believe that would trigger a review of the sewer and water, well, most of the sewer capacity.
So, so he would want to know that as well.
So that would be off Maple or off Main or both, or do you know?
Whatever, it would, it would require a study of how much sewer this is going to produce, where it would enter the town system. Capacity is available to get from here to the sewer treatment plant, and that there's availability in the sewer treatment plant.
But after this point, after the date, this not being one of the considerations of something that was already approved, is all the other stuff that's approved comes into play with this.
All of the vested projects that are listed.
Right, so there may not be a lot of extra, when you consider vested projects, and that's something you might, you're going to want to get familiar with about.
Well, how can you understand that, the vested project?
There, there are sewer treatment, the sewer treatment, I can't even call it a plan, but sewer treatment.
Is it a master plan type of concept?
There are projects that have been approved in town such as South Peak, for landing.
Just two hotels.
Two hotels that have already been approved. Correct me if I'm wrong here, OJ, I don't want to. And, and they, they've already got an allocation for them. And so your allocation comes after that, from my understanding, if the town system couldn't handle all of what they were doing as well as that. And I don't know what happened, I guess it gets.
Upgraded.
Well. I don't know.
It would be delayed until this capacity available.
So how, who, who does that study? How do we find that out?
You would have to do your own sort of capacity study.
You'll have to determine how much we're going to need. But then who then looks at it to the vesting project, kind of whatever plan.
Well, you would have your own sort of capacity study and our engineer would review it.
Yeah.
So there's a town engineer that would review it?
He's a, he's a third-party contractor. He's, he works especially for municipalities.
I mean, I think the best bet probably would be to hire an engineer who knows some stuff about the town somewhere. And, and he could come to the town and get all the information he needs on what he would be required. And then he could talk to Ray Corber. I'm sure Ray, who's the town engineer.
Ray Corber.
Is the town engineer.
And Carol could probably give you his information, who can give you what's currently vested and not, and what the requirement would be.
There's not a moratorium that I'm unaware of, right?
Not at this time.
No, it's not moratorium.
No, it's just that it's, that we're getting close to the capacity because the license that we have to run the room system, if we reach a certain level of, of use, over a certain number of days, you know, it's one of those, so license allows us to continue as long as we don't reach that threshold amount. We're getting closer than we'd like to that threshold amount. And that's how come we're anxious about the size of the sewer plant.
And the license you're referring to is?
Yeah, we have, we, OJ can probably describe it better because I don't know all the details.
What's that?
It's a empty's permit, I think. But I think the bigger thing is the sewer line on Main Street, that's capacity, and what it will handle based on what's already being. What's already been given out for, for.
Butch, have a question?
Yeah, Jim, just a comment, probably scaring this guy away, but don't, the, the, what applicants should know is, as we speak, that sewer lining question is being studied at your, at your willing, a bidding by one of the hotels. So we'll know, so he's in here before you conceptually, but I think just to know that, that all applicants coming forward, what you're going to be questioning on where they're tying in and stuff, and we, we could be fine. But I think that's probably the simplest way at the conceptual level. If this gentleman chooses to go further and actually develops plans, then certainly his architect slash engineer will answer all those questions for him.
There's, there's also a, but would this require, would this figure something as far as a D O T and access on the roof of the Main Street?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to say yes or no definitively. My guess, Paul, is those were two existing businesses already. And while there's a little change, hello, that's, actually, the housing does give me pause, as I don't know who mentioned it, parking gives me pause because I have a feeling that parking of that, any overflow parking from that type of development across the street would impact our, our town parking lot, which is already stressed. And while there is public portion of that lot, where at times we have a hard time getting folks placed to park to come in and do town hall business. So I'd like the planning board to consider that too.
Well, I think, just a comment to you, which is, I think the applicant at this conceptual is talking about taking everything down and redoing a whole new building. So it's not just, it's not just.
Taking down, oh, I misunderstood. Is he taking down both buildings or just one? Both buildings. Oh, that's a, that's a change. Okay, I haven't seen it, Paul. I'm, yeah, I'm sitting at home, yeah. Okay, that could be a game changer as far as, that could be a game changer as far as D O T. So he should investigate that. That's, I, I don't know the answer to that then. I don't.
Help me understand that, Butch, if you mind, if you don't mind. Help me understand by raising the building.
His, his, the best example I can give you is, it's a, a much larger example, but of how sensitive D O T is right now. The Riverwalk was a, an approved project for a decade and a half, and they had permits. But it's taken so long to build it, they're getting ready to do their second phase. And D O T says they're not going to honor anything that was done before as far as the traffic on one twelve. And they can build the hotel, but they got to do a whole new traffic study. And D O T will determine what has to be done down at that intersection for the additional traffic that's going to impact one twelve, which is, as you know, live in town, is stressed at more and more all the time. So that it, they probably are going to have an interest in the amount of traffic that you potentially could add to one twelve with the type of, of conceptual project that you're putting together. I'm only saying it conceptually. They may have no interest, but you should put that on your radar.
At what point do they get involved?
Excuse me?
At what point does D O T get involved? At what threshold are they?
When you, when you turn a permit and, when you, when you permit to us, you submit the packet, we're obligated to know, notify a D E S. That's one way. They may find out from other means, but you could do it yourself. But we, we, Carol primarily would, would notify, but also notify D O T that of the type of project that's going to be on, developed on Main Street. And they would, my guess is they would undoubtedly, and Carol can correct me, but they would undoubtedly ask for something from you. And I, yeah, sitting here tonight, I couldn't say what that would be or whether it would even happen, but you should keep that on your radar.
Right, I've been notifying D O T about projects on Main Street for a couple of years. And for the first year that I notified them, they hardly ever respond. And now they're responding, so I don't know if it's a change in personnel or.
Is there a timeframe that they have to respond to that?
Well, I just, I treat them like in a butter.
Okay.
And so when I send a butter notices out for a hearing, I send a copy to them. And then recently I've been hearing from them.
And they'll make a comment to bring to the board, or, or they won't say anything?
Sometimes they're not particularly timely, but because it's the state government, you know, they, they're kind of bigger fish than we are. So I guess I have that conversation with them in advance before, you know, before you bring something to us, just to feel them out, see if they're going to care enough, because sometimes they say they don't care. And you think, oh, they don't care. And, and we don't, we don't necessarily know why they don't care. Something else when we bring it to their attention, then they do care, so.
Right, I mean, and, and what you said before, that the D O T is the authority of jurisdiction over Route one twelve, and they could remove all that parking along, if, if, like, it gets very, like, really busy and they decide they want to remove the, the, I mean, the.
Downstreet parking.
What's that?
Downstreet parking.
Downstreet parking, that could go away tomorrow. Maybe not tomorrow, but, you know, it's, it's been discussed at the board's elected meeting. So that's why parking is so important to have enough of it that you don't rely on. And I think when, when our, our ordinance talks about loosening up the requirements with the mixed use, it's, yeah, you know, we might be able to loosen up the requirement, but there has to be some other way to mitigate where all those other people might park at, you know.
And like Maple Street too, right? I mean, that's where our curb cut is.
Yeah, but if it makes Maple Street, you don't want to park on Maple Street, so that's issues.
Well, no, he got the downstreet that he has parked.
Right, I mean, I think your parking, I think your parking is probably one of your bigger.
Is it, conceptually, is it your intention to, to use Maple Street for that project?
Not face forward. I mean, the facing would be on one twelve, but our curb cut is Maple, like, we're not looking to, the entryway for parking would be Maple, and there's nineteen spaces that we've been able to create. Now, I know there's a couple in the front. I know there's a few on Maple, and I understand not this lot, but I understand there's also another municipal lot deeper in, and I'm not going to lie on that because I don't think I need to, but to mitigate and to kind of create some other options, there is that for overnight potentially parking for the, the workforce, if they're, if they're even, you know, utilizing vehicles. And there's a lot of, a lot of moving, moving pieces to this. One of the, the retail concepts that we have is, it wouldn't even have an employee. It would be more of an automated check-in system. So, you know, there's that, but again, you know, those concepts are still kind of floating out there. But my reading of the bylaws, if I, if I'm reading it correctly, is with the mixed use, we're, we're kind of there with parking. I get it, it's still discretionary and all. One, you know, some of the new things that I'm most concerned about are D O T, which I wasn't really aware of, and that there's a potential capacity on the sewer, which we can certainly make some phone calls on that. But, uh, you know, I guess the question is, is, you know, we're trying to put something really nice that kind of flows along at the same vista, as you will, of the adjoining buildings. Is this something that we should be continuing forward with, or is this, is this not something that the board is interested in approving?
Joe, do you have a question?
Well, I couldn't make it on your map. Let's say you have the parking lots.
They.
There's a certain square foot you're required.
Yeah, and he, he did what you were thinking. I can't see it very well.
I couldn't have it read on my map, sorry.
But I made sure that he was making them the size that were part of the bylaws.
Also, you're coming in, a lot of these parking lots, when the guy goes to the back, it'll be very high press. You can have about twenty cars, nineteen, twenty cars coming in on a small entrance, right across a narrow street like Maple Street. That's barely, you can barely get two cars up and down that street now. There's a, yeah, that corner, a lot of traffic coming from over sean. And there is a state statute saying, seventy feet to Main Street, the state has to be notified of any additional changes of package coming up on the side street. We should have to check with the state on that. But town ordinance, when seventy feet of a main highway.
Yeah.
State has been notified, besides, why makes more traffic coming in on that side street? That is state stipulation.
Well, I think there's fifteen spots there now, so.
But you, you use more than has been. Tear it down, put it in the pan. You want traffic coming in, we'll just do it. But how wide is it just going into the property?
Sorry?
And south of Maple Street, the width of the curb cut.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change that.
What is it now? You're going to have it.
It's the length of.
It's ambiguous where it is in right now.
I, I mean, I can get to the measurement, but I've been in it, it's probably the size of two cars.
And what about, I'm just worried about if they're coming out of the parking lot, how, do they have to go across the center strip to make the right turn or left turn?
What do you mean?
You're coming out your parking lot.
Yeah.
Wouldn't Maple Street, the street's so narrow, you're going to have to go about three quarters of the way across the street to make a turn coming out to go to Main Street.
I don't know.
Straight right now, so that walk to here, well, with the Maple Street. They come all the time to make a turn. We can make it without hitting the curb.
There it was called for a hundred and seventy square feet per.
Yeah, it's originally was ten by twenty, then.
Ten by nineteen, isn't it?
Now it's more like nine by nineteen.
So the single parking space, the plan, the one, one hundred and seventy square feet area, having additional, and having additional adequate area for movement.
Okay.
It also says that when we talk about mixed uses, it says.
Can I say something?
Jim, I, it's just a comment. I think, well, I understand the enthusiasm, but obviously your decision. But I think we're getting away from a conceptual here. I hate, the applicants can certainly come in and talk one-on-one with staff. And I'm not sure the board should, just my thought, that the board should get much deeper other than to flag the big ticket items that, that's just my thought, Jim.
Yeah, I, I think so. So I, I have a couple of things. You know, every residential unit requires fifteen thousand square feet a lot. So you don't have, you don't have that.
Say that again.
You need fifteen thousand square feet of land for every residential unit.
This is an apartment, though.
What's that?
It's a business use, an apartment.
Doesn't matter. Those apartments are residential uses.
So you're saying that I need to have.
Well, I mean, in that zone.
That's correct, though.
Yeah, well, we can waive it if all other requirements are met, but he's going to ask for a waiver on the parking.
Which I'm not sure, right?
It goes for a special exception.
Right, you have to go to Z B A.
What does the hundred, the?
The park.
So.
Well, am I, am I asking for a waiver for parking?
This is conceptual.
I know, but say, pretend it wasn't, and what I have right now is measurements and is ratios at eighteen spaces, and we have nineteen. I mean, I don't think I am unless I read the bylaws wrong.
Well, you, you, but I think.
But I'm more concerned about the fifteen thousand per residential unit.
You're looking at twenty-four unless, right, unless you can fall into the town requirement that you're excited. So if you're looking at twenty-four and you only have nineteen, I mean, if, if you read the, the ordinance, it will tell you what you need and what you can have. I mean, it clearly, it all needs to be, it all needs to be onsite. It's all proposed new construction, self-provided adequate off-street parking space. But it also does say provides for mixed use, and but then it says the plenty for finding off-street parking proposes adequate for the intended use of substantially needed. Proposes adequate for the intended use of sub- substantially meets the purposes ordinance.
Which we're not really asking for, even though I think there is some other parking that we can use to mitigate.
Like I said, parking's gonna be your, you wanna look at that.
Could be on site.
Well, I think we have nineteen onsite, but I think the ordinance you're speaking to is, if we didn't have enough. You can utilize some of the off-streets to mitigate and utilize, which I guess the municipal lot could be helpful.
No, when they spark in the.
The spark, the parking on the street in front of the building, and then the parking along Main Street, I mean, Maple Street, which. I'm not actually looking for, which is what I think that bylaw is talking to. Right, right, well, I appreciate you guys, I appreciate you doing this, because it's super helpful.
And if anybody's parking on Maple Street, what time they're told. We gave you Main Street Park on the side, like, that free parking, because that's gonna be told.
All sides every night?
Yes.
Yeah, you can't have it much of time.
It's good to know, that's why I'm here.
Also, you get them for sure, where your dumpster's gonna be, spill room's gonna be.
At what point do you require a dumpster?
Well, that's up to you.
Yeah, you.
You're gonna have one.
You can have all the waste out.
So it's not required, that was not required this side.
What's the problem?
Well, requirements, you do it as you bear proof.
Right, that makes sense.
That's all I'm telling you, ahead of time, you know, it might come into play.
Why, I just don't wanna confuse, there's a certain nu- number of retail, commercial, residential that require a dumpster that I'm. What's that?
You bring your dumpster dump every day, that we've been unfortunately, we're gonna say.
Right.
And 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 just also to help, you know, I don't know if it's a helper entrance, but. Board has, the planning board has allowed. Use of other space based on time, so in other words, if. For example, whose loss was not, it doesn't get used at night.
Well, that's private, I wouldn't wanna.
I'm saying, the the town has has allowed that before, we've allowed it for, for the place to have. But you know, the most reason was the catering down here.
Right, but I think he's looking to do that on his own watch.
Right, well, I'm I'm just saying, if if he knew her, or if he can talk to him, but but I usually know spaces, if he doesn't have enough. Instead of parking on Pollard Road, he may be able to, so, this is just.
Yeah, and I love that. I love that you guys are helping with this, um, but that's what I think the bylaw was trying to say is. Although you need two space per residential unit, if you're in a mixed use scenario. We're gonna be flexible with that, because we know that there's going to be swapping times, right, intermittent times. Where someone's gonna be there doing business while the other person's going to be gone, working, and vice versa.
I think this is getting, we're getting kind of getting beyond the concept, yeah.
But I appreciate it, I still do.
So I mean, it does say multi-family housing is a residential use.
Yeah.
I mean, you schedule. And if I go to the metro.
Will these be short-term rentals or long-term?
I'm hoping long-term, I'm hoping that I'm able to help with the issue of workforce housing and that we're signing.
I know Airbnb or the yeah.
But do you have the new Airbnb, what what is that?
And you wanted to put it in, put it in the play last two weeks ago.
Say what?
Airbnb.
No, if if. If you were building six short-term rental units in one building, that would be considered a commercial use. Just whether you call it a hotel or Airbnb or whatever, it'd be a hotel.
That's the question I asked.
I guess that's not what you're here for, correct?
No, that sounds like an administrative nightmare today.
And then.
So you were talking about.
So it says, can't be putting up number three in the metro chart, it says, for all other residential uses. The minimum lot size of roof is applicable on a per-unit basis. For example, pre-unit multi-family dwelling in the general use district requires forty-five thousand square feet.
That's general use.
Well, it's just for an example, so.
So what is it for the village center?
Fifteen thousand, let me see, fifteen thousand square feet.
For every.
For an unit, for a unit, but again, we can waive it if all of the conditions are met.
Right, we can be even more strenuous, we want to leave a downtown district like here, you know.
Right, we can, like, well, it means here for. I'm just pointing that out, I mean, you know, I can't, we can't say yes or no tonight, I'm just pointing that out, that that's something we need to look at.
Stormwater management may be an issue that we wants to look at as well.
That's what I wanted to to bring up, is that that we have a stormwater management ordinance. That says that you're covering more than um, fifty, fifty percent of the lot.
Or fifteen, right.
Or or, right, would.
Fifteen, one five?
No, fifteen thousand. Five zero, the center of the lot, you're you're disturbing.
Or fifteen thousand square feet.
Or fifteen thousand square feet.
It's one, either or, yeah.
Yeah, that you would need to um, present with your plan is stormwater management act, which means. Like when Paul was talking about all the rain from the peak of your roof towards the road.
Yeah.
All of that rain, or snow, was gonna come out towards the road, where is that gonna go? Um, you know, we don't want it on our sidewalk, the state doesn't want it on their highway. Um, there needs to be some sort of system that takes care of that, whether that's drains or swales or slopes.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Okay.
And and that needs to be done for the whole lot, what you cannot do is take like all the water from your parking lot and dump it on the guy's land behind.
Right.
Now, it's, you know, this, it, whatever runs off, whatever runs off your lot right now naturally. It can't run off any more than that after you develop it.
Got it.
So by creating that that bigger building, you're gonna create more surface area.
Unless we mitigate it with something else, right? And.
I mean, and they do the.
Do they drop, you can drop the drains into the the drainage system, if you do it correctly.
State controlled and.
You can funnel it out to Maple.
I think Maple goes into the state.
State, yeah. Has to stay on site.
Probably create some sort of retention, yeah, um, underneath, they do it in parking lots, under parking lots, there's other different ways you can do it, but.
Like it's weird that it.
I mean, it works like a leachant field.
It works like, yeah, almost like a leachant field.
And that could be like, whatever, in the corner of the parking lot with the grasses, or it could be under the parking lot. Or it can be semi both, like, have them on the line, run under the parking lot to leach.
But you're allowed, you're allowed to discharge what's currently being discharged, so an engineer will say, this is what you're currently discharging. This is how you can keep it at that level by doing X, Y, and Z, okay?
There is one good thing to property, though, basically all large rock gravel under it, so it drains pretty well.
Yeah, it does.
That's good, I think it's a great piece of property, actually, or another thing that we could really make it look really nice. And I've already talked to the individual who's done some milling work for me in the past, and he's willing to bring it up here. And it, it would look really nice.
So anyone have any other questions?
Also, when you're doing your plans, but you wanna tell us exactly the primary need by.
Say, yeah.
The primary type of needs.
Well, that's on here right now.
I can't make out that most of your writing is just too small.
Yeah, he gets, the the height, he's twenty-nine, yeah.
Less than thirty feet.
Yeah, he's twenty-nine.
Okay, that's good.
Uh, what is the next process, other than going to the DOT, getting potentially a traffic study to to make sure that they're all set? Bringing us stormwater management, what's what's the next process?
Try to Carol, the site plan.
Right, the site plan approval.
We'll get the ball rolling.
Check the, run the water and sewer.
Yeah, I mean.
The state, they need to apply fire.
Yeah, I mean, Carol has all the checklist, we'll have that, put it on the checklist.
Who will be required to furnish um, however many steps of plans. They're all, yeah, give you that for all.
Yeah, with certain, certain items, requirements and all that, okay?
You'll have to show the place to show.
Right, I got that on there, yep. That's a separate plan, right? I mean, you're not playing, like, just playing, but uh, great, great, that's exactly what we're gonna do.
I don't know about the the fire chief, but you may wanna have a conversation with the fire chief and the public works director, just to make sure. Yeah, and uh, they had a way to make sure, see if they've got any concerns, that they may wanna address some fire coming from the board.
Yep, and so Ron's fire, and what was the other person here? So he'll be good to talk to about.
In the years, like you said, so, they don't need police, fire, and public works, public, and the other department.
I I think your priorities are the, talking to your own engineer.
Yeah, right.
About the sewer capacity.
Yeah.
Put him in charge of three quarter, stormwater management.
Yep.
And the DOT.
Yep.
Those are the three things that are um. I don't wanna say out of our control.
Yeah.
But but if any one of those fail.
Right.
We're gonna turn this down.
Right.
I think the more subjective things is getting a waiver or allowing us to change for the for the lot coverage. And I see that you're at seventy-four percent.
Yeah.
And and the maximum in the village center is eighty.
Yeah.
So you've met it, you've met the lot coverage requirement, um, it does not meet the strict criteria of residential. But um, you know, speaking for myself, I would be looking at this from what is there now. What you're proposing in the ultimate benefit for the town, um. To make that decision on on lot coverage versus versus the fifteen thousand minimum. And then the second thing is, you know, the the parking situation doesn't meet the strict criteria of the of the ordinance. But when you go through and and looking at your calculations of, you know, people are gonna be there during the day, and some people are gonna be there during the night. And and it's the same, you're on a shared parking, but it's a venue a lot.
Yeah.
You know, those those three employees and the customers and all that have gone at night.
Yeah.
And and your your um, residents typically have gone during the day.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, those things are more subjective and and, you know, as a as a conceptual to get. Our ideas, uh, icing those to be workable, it's the sewer capacity, the stormwater, and the DOT that. You know, tho- those are either gonna be pass fail type thing, no matter how subjective any of us are, they're either gonna work or they're not gonna work.
So treat those as prerequisites to coming back, check those boxes before.
Don't waste your money on, in here, some stuff until you know that the sewer, stormwater, and DOT, you're gonna let this fly. Because if those, if those two don't fail, then we can all agree on parking and coverage and everything else.
Doesn't matter.
But it's not gonna, it's not gonna.
You don't wanna spend the money if you don't have to.
You you got that right, you got that right.
I would still check with the state, uh, sit back on Main Street.
Yeah.
If it's going in for the.
That's the DOT.
DOT.
Got that on his list.
One, two, three, in order.
Like, I, the prayer of Troy, the policy, I've been in several meetings with the state, they've talked about eight to ten, fifteen times in the last twenty years. Eliminating every parking place on every pocket on the Main Street, make it a three lane, suicide strip, and tie in right to the. Up passing or again, or we don't do lights.
So how would that be a turn, a turning lane through the middle of it, is that what they?
They don't, they have their way, they plan on trying to. It would be actually, it would not be one parking place on Main Street.
But what would they do with that third lane, would they rotate?
It's a, it's a turning lane, they come in, it's.
Yeah.
Pull out.
Yeah.
Suicide strip.
Yeah, well, let's hope they don't do that.
We've been fighting for quite a while, but.
I mean, yeah, so.
Didn't do the week, it's simple.
Well, hopefully I won't need those two spots, right, that are on the front there.
Try not to use those as part of your back.
Right.
I think the plan with the with the shared spaces of of eighteen, and you're providing nineteen. Is not out of the question.
Yeah, cool.
Well, we don't know how the board's gonna vote. We don't, but he's here for conceptual to get our feelings on on it, and so we're not saying yes, we're not saying no.
Understood. Understood.
Wanna be cautious, not get approval, I mean, so things can change, yeah, we have input from the public.
Fully, fully aware, fully understood, yeah, fully understood.
There have been submissions on that road with some of the people who live there as far as traffic goes, so.
Well, we wanna be a good neighbor.
Yep.
Well.
I love this town.
I think it's a good idea, so I plan to spend a lot of time in this town in the near future, so.
The only problem, seeing your back, is the very tiny head try to pull out.
Not out of Maple.
Try to, you back.
I'm gonna go there right now, try to understand that component.
If you don't agree at parking the end, you have to pull out across this way, everybody parks fine, it's one thing, nobody go back.
I I think there's a lot of room in the middle, and I can't imagine the conceptual ideas that I have. Would ever require a lot of people coming at the same time. Um, certainly not like a La Hoo's, where there, it's super tight up against the building there. Um, but I think there's plenty of room to back out, maneuver, and exit with the cooperation of other people. If you see their reverse lights on, you're gonna defer to them, let them go, or vice versa, but I think there's.
Talk about others, you mind?
When you're, when you're in the process of designing them. I'm gonna talk to a designer, it's about green space, and also about exterior lighting, that you can back up for residential.
Well, let me ask you this, because some of the, um, I'm on the zoning board in my town. What about creating, would the board be inclined to have a previous versus. A tar parking, or something that actually. We can, I mean, but, I mean, but when you're talking green space like that, to me is is, you know, we're not covering it with a. Tar parking, we're we're actually creating something that is all.
I just want, was lost like green space along Main Street, that that's, you know.
Yeah.
Something like this.
Oh, you're talking about the visual.
Yeah, yeah, the visual of of a little green space along Main Street.
In non-basis speaking, we had one developer, put a whole list after my basis.
On Main Street.
For the plants and bushes, that's the ones they looked at, hooked it up, that, most of them are basis.
Yeah.
Something to look into a few of it.
Yeah.
The lighting one, because you do back up.
Yeah.
The lighting for the street.
Yeah, this has been really helpful, I appreciate it, just think that someone might, if who comes to a, uh, pipeline, or even he might ask you, you know. Yeah. Okay, so I'll I'll check those three boxes, go with Carol, get my checklist, and hopefully see who relatively is it. All right, thank you all very much, I know. So that would be awesome, anything you could do for me on this.
I added them, I wrote my handwriting, oh, Hampton Inn and Fairfield Inn.
Oh, where are those going?
Hampton Inn is gonna be up here next to Rite Aid.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's a, that's a good brand.
Fairfield is going up here next to the road into the common man, or actually to Forest Ridge.
In between Common Man and Forest Ridge?
No, beyond Forest Ridge. Forest Ridge side.
Got it.
Yeah.
In front of, uh, all like there.
All it stopped just before.
Got it. And those are still going forward.
Yeah, well, as far as, they have their pool.
Yeah.
From the three, four hundred units, it's five hundred acres behind the two, I don't know what they're gonna do with that, we'll find out.
That's a big, big piece of property. Well, I really appreciate this, I know you dove in a little bit deeper than the typical conceptual, so I appreciate that as well, and.
I'm not trying to stop you, just want you to know it's getting used to, so, you know what you do before you commit, it's, yes or no, you don't have to commit by three, four months, get an answer.
That'd be great.
Like some guy has done.
That'd be great, and that's why we're here, to try to figure that out, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you all, we're recording in virtually.
We will see you soon.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Carol.
By the way, remember to talk to the sidewalks, come up and off bike path, and it's on the other side.
Up here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both can come right straight on to each other, there's no zigzagging, I don't know what the problem was. Bike path connects right under one, you know, it doesn't have to go here and up, it's already right in line with it.
Yeah.
If you took a look up there.
I think that was the condition of the code, you take this one and this one, connect to the crosswalk.
You know any solution, stuff that around the pond, for fence, plant, wild rose bushes, about three feet deep from crosswalk, all things five feet high, nobody will go through it. They are, they're gonna be threatened.
All right, moving right along here, possible purchase of common land by Barbara Barocchio, see that right?
Yeah, it is.
He's making this presentation. Ah, yes, I will. I'm just looking at what I have. I want to make sure what everybody does. Okay. Do they have, oh, they do it. Okay, if you look on the third page, it's a package, this is, there's a map. Beachwood Drive is going up in Beachwood, go beyond the mountain club.
Yeah.
And it goes up straight and then Beach turns to the right. And they sort of come up around on the hill, sort of right up in the middle of that, up on the hill, there is a semicircle going off one side of the road that is a town road. I call it Wood Court. Which is just a little.
The Wood Court serves three houses.
Okay.
The other piece they want, the other side, they all have a circle one time.
We, we own the other side of it as if a circle would have, could have been built there and it wasn't. There's only a single house on that non-circle.
That circle used to be there.
Did it? I mean, almost looks like.
That circle was there before the two sections connected.
Okay.
So the old section used to come up around and it never connected. What they did was, this circle was a turnaround, so when they were both there, they would turn around, they would come back down. And on the other end, we're, I guess we're same avenue, we go around that sharp there, and that never, that did not connect. That didn't connect. So what they did was, they had that there and then they used that.
Okay, so this really became abandoned.
Right. If you look back at all the information about Beachwood Road, you'll see that, that was the way it was back then. So, but then, then it got, went through and they didn't need that circle. And I guess Phil Gravenby keeps owning that house.
This one here?
Yeah, yeah. And so I, I think Phil Gravenby liked it.
That was just real, so we moved to the other.
Yeah, I think I'm going to take a little bit more liberty here. When it's, I put that road through, what I'm assuming, but.
So that's when they just got rid of the, whatever, it was asphalted, they got up, put in grass and landscaping and trees and it's beautiful.
Yeah. It was nice.
So we've been presented a request to deep that land over to that of Butter.
With stipulations though.
And it, and create a, just really a larger lot.
So what, what are they doing? They just basically draw on street line across here?
I remember right.
We have the letter of the Red Monkeys. Wants to do it for all the paperwork and not charge them.
Right. And he would, there would be a drainage easement for the town because there was some drainage on that side of the road.
There's something else you get to put in there also.
What's that?
No. Over the years, I worked in one mile, even before Paul got there, believe it or not.
I'm not that old.
I'm that old, maybe you're not, but I am. It was similar, right in front of this place, the water, so it's running here. Should keep the water, it was so easy for the town, eventually they go through the property. To be accessible, the access which you needed there at that time. I'm not trying to stop them. It's a good idea for them to square it up, but.
Great.
Next one, but there are easements for water and sewer along in front of that property.
The only question I have, I mean, I'm all favored doing this with people, but I'm not sure after everything I've read and I have in my files, that the town owns that property. And I believe the town has the right to give that property away. I mean, if you look back at the history of what's happened, that that property of the loan, even as recently redoing the roads up there, Lou has contributed fifty percent of helping do all our road improvement. Again, I'm all for this, but I think the town needs to make sure that we own that, we have the right to give that property away.
Okay, so we're basically drawing, taking the right line, one, draw on it straight up the road and then fill it in the semicircle. And that'll be.
I have one question there.
Go ahead. If you have a question, go ahead.
No, I just comment, the, yeah, the, in the lawsuit, when, when we lost a one of whichever way we went, but anyway, we own Beachwood Roads now. And that, that shadow, that, that half a circle that is now lawn us is, is still in, within that right of way that we inherited in this last few years, we've taken over Beachwood Roads. So that answers Paul's question. They'll, the, the right, the easement by moving the, adjusting the lot line to straighten that out will not affect the utilities. They'll still be in our right of way, including culverts and drainage. And the folks are willing to do that, that's not a, that's not a consideration. So Nate and I have looked at it. If you look at the map, it looks like it's a huge piece of land. I can tell you it's, I don't know what the square footage is, but it's smaller than the average living room. I mean, it's not huge anymore. So anyway, Nate doesn't, doesn't think, in fact, we made the comment that twenty twenty being perfect hindsight, when we went through there, we probably should have not taken the path that we ended up paving, that loop down through there and turned that over to the owners as well. And we'd have just had a road through there, but, well, that being said, like I said to the board, I, this, Nate has absolutely no, no concerns and neither does the homeowner. They want to, they'll give us whatever space we want to make sure we've got room to take care of the utilities that go up through there. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, so who's going to pay for the survey work?
It'll have to be the homeowner.
But not the town people.
No, that'll have to be the home, that'll be part of the, the Mococho's would have to do that.
It's not going to be any cost to the town.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
There'll be no cost to the town. It'd be the Mococho's that would have to, with survey and, and registering that deed.
Okay, am I bringing a little extra revenue because the lot will be worth more?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Marginally.
Marginally thousands of feet. If it's even in the thousands, it could be in hundreds of square feet. I don't know what it is, but it isn't very big.
Okay, Joey, what's that?
See right here? Little curve piece.
Yeah.
That's the guy in the lot twelve.
Yep.
What'd you do, Carol?
And so they actually.
Number six, just put the other guy, was this guy complaining when he's not getting his feet?
Well, you pass that down, please.
You know what I'm saying, Paul?
Yeah.
This little curve right here.
Yeah, so.
Go square up the road.
This is how.
There's a small piece. I know, I get the map right here.
Now, look at my map.
He's filled it in with parks, that little.
That's exactly what I just did.
Okay, okay. Now, I agree with you, Joe.
No, because if you were the butter, would you like that little corner to?
Yeah, especially, especially with the driveway, it's right down to the.
I agree with you, but we both did the same thing.
Twice, yeah, one night.
Three times in one year.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, so it would make sense to.
Take care of that at the same time.
Make everything, make the lot lines straight. So that that small.
Pleasure.
High shaped little corner would go to lot twelve and then the bigger chunk goes to lot thirteen.
So I guess contact lot twelve, see if they want it.
If he doesn't, no problem.
It wouldn't.
Well, I mean, it's going to be a cost.
We would retain that then, in my opinion, we would retain that.
Yeah.
I still think that's an issue.
Well, I have as one of the
like, I mean.
Conditions clear title, that we would have a title search done by a title company.
I agree.
Office of opinion and required title insurance.
You know, and, and I can tell you six when it was done, they asked for state engineers to check it before it was actually accepted. Now, that was the whole lot line, the whole thing, there's no, they never had any. So it's always been going back and forth, either a heat take road.
Yeah.
Or in, and then it's here and there.
Believe me, I'm well aware of that.
And, and the fact that Lou has contributed to that road, fifty on his last project, says Lou has vested interest in it. So I, I think there needs to be clear title, clear title to afford it down, decide to keep it.
Yeah.
Anyone else's problem with whether we give someone else a piece of property that, and I mean, the RSA talks about to acquire or sell, but by buying and giving, so maybe even sold for a dollar at least.
Yeah, I think there has to be consideration for legal contract.
So it's acquire or sell.
Right.
So if you sold it for a dollar.
Yeah, right.
If there's any contract, you're right. Offer acceptance consideration.
Right. All right, is this a public hearing on this matter for the board?
No, this is, this is the planning board's recommendation.
They call it.
Right, so I mean.
They call it the planning board, the RSA.
Right, so this is the one hearing we're going to have on this.
Oh, oh, yes, but the board.
You have two hearings, but this is the board, the planning board's hearing.
Correct.
It says that the, what it says, they shall first admit any sudden proposed acquisition or sale to the planning board and or to the conservation provision for new recommendation by those bodies. So all you can do, that's the recommendation of whether you think it's to be sold or not.
Right. Okay, so I guess.
Technically, we should open it up for public.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Why don't we open it up?
Is there a sec? Okay, would you all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any member of the public out there that would like to speak? No, no public comment, so we're going to close. All right, Joe and OJ seconded, all in favor?
Aye. All right.
Mark, any more comments?
None.
All right, so what, what I'm going to report that to the board of selection is to investigate water and sewer easements, drainage easements, clear title and title insurance and look at, putting that small piece on.
I think we should make a motion to, to, to support the sales property.
Right, with those four.
With those four.
You know, valuable considerations, platonic gift.
You want to repeat those to the minutes and answer?
Yeah.
Are you want to make reference?
A water and sewer easement.
Water, sewer and drainage.
And drainage easement, I guess.
Appropriate easements.
Yeah, water, sewer and drainage, because it frames on it.
Okay. A clear title and a requirement for title insurance. Reserving or, or either reserving or selling the small piece to lot number twelve that's in front of their lot.
Yeah. And then also, all the, the receiving, the buyers are going to have to pay for all the survey costs and stuff.
Yeah, no cost to town.
No question.
No cost to town.
Is there any opinion on? I'm nuts.
I don't think there's any reason not to recommend the sale personally.
That's right.
Is there any input regarding selling it for a dollar versus selling it for something more than a dollar?
More to gain on that feature.
I would say that if it was, if it could be used by someone else for something else, then I might consider that. But I don't see this as being able to be used by anyone else for anything else. So to me, I mean, putting it back on a tax bill is.
It's kind of a piece of land in no man's land, basically.
You can build a house on, no one else can buy a building upon it.
Well, technically, you've used it, cleaned it up fifteen years, you own it by adverse possession.
You can say that, but you have to. All right. All right, so.
I'm not making the same motion for the stuff on the other side of the street, because those, that's a whole different ball of wax over there.
In fact, well.
There's two, there's two driveways going up that.
Three?
Yeah.
Two or three, I can't remember exactly.
I'm, I'm guessing they wouldn't want us to give it to them, then they plot it, they maintain it, they.
There's two access on that.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, there's a motion, right?
Yeah.
With those considerations. Any more discussion? All right, is second?
I may be lost.
All right, who's Joe seconded? All in favor would be granting, recommending sale would be, conditions, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Carrie's.
Here's something for information. Wood Court, no work where you go. There was a sewer line going in and a water line went right through it. You have this punch up sewer line of the big lot. And there was a high tension line that was hitting it, and we wanted to do it.
Those, those high voltage lines up there, that pieces of wood over, pieces of.
All right, any, any public participation? Any, any other business?
I have one.
Go ahead, sir.
There is a gate that I noticed on Powell Road, which is the one going to Peter Gavoni's house. I asked our. Howell, Howell.
T O W L E.
Technically, he's, that's, that's controlled by the state.
Toll Road? Well, I asked our public works director if it was, if Toll Road was a town road and he couldn't give me an answer, so.
It was, it was.
So you want to, he asked me to check with Peter, but I'm not going to check with Peter because I don't know, I tell you it's mine. So I would think somewhere in the town, I don't know whether it's a town road or not. Even if it's not, it still requires a special exception, have a gate. So, and I don't know what got there, but.
If it's on the town road.
Probably be in it, but if you let one person do it, then if you let everybody else do it, so.
The town owner itself, it says, if you're doing it off a state highway, it's state control on it, not the town's control.
Well, it's further in on Powell, whatever.
Town road.
I mean, when I look at the tax map, it shows the road and then if you go into the different people's lots, it doesn't show that those lots are part of the road. So I don't know how that works on.
Three houses on the left hand side. Original going in, repeat going else.
What's that?
With three different places on the left hand side. Magic.
Doesn't this thing like?
I went to the side going in that, actually, I caught some called Pistouse Road. But she's like, like the name, so they changed it to Toll Road.
The old, the old post office guy used to look at it on the left hand side.
Let's go, before that, old Kentall.
Jim?
Yeah.
Nate talked me briefly about that today. What's the issue on Toll, Toll Road? What, why is it up for discussion? I, I missed the whole.
Gate crossing.
There's a gate across.
There's a gate across, yeah, and I, I, I think we assumed it's a private drive, but Paul's saying it isn't.
I don't know, I, I don't know. But I asked Nate, he didn't know, so I tried to figure it out.
Is there any other property beyond the gate that is not Peter Gavoni's?
No, I don't think so. I think it's all the way down through there.
So, so it's, at that point, it's really a driveway, it's not a.
At one time, it was a town right of way.
It doesn't access.
Yeah, I don't know what's wrong, I mean, if you look at our, our ordinance, is what they say for a gate. Um, I, I thought I had it somewhere back.
Yeah, I think, I don't think.
I mean, if you take a look at the ordinances about a gate, you really need to have a special, special exception to have a gate on any, any road.
Not any road.
I mean.
State highway like my wood yard is never required.
Anyway. I just thought that before I go into now such quick gates up.
That, isn't that gate, that gate's been there at least eight years I've been in town. It's been there long.
Oh, that's a brand new one.
Oh, it's a new one?
Yeah.
I, I always thought it was gated.
Oh. It's gated on this road down to the pond.
Yeah, is that the gate you're talking about?
No.
It's a different one, okay.
It's a toll road.
Okay, I'll, we'll check into it. I, Nate talked me briefly today and I, it's got to be Mr. Gavoni, so we can check with Peter. I'm just asking.
At one time, the town flowers.
Private, right?
Yeah, it's fine. I, I'll, I'll look at it.
At one time, the town did fall from the highway down to Peter Gavoni. Three seven residents, Gehagan and Toomey and Coleman, but they were all related. Peter brought them in from there over the years.
Doesn't the town have a, a list of what roads are town roads?
Well, try to find Powell Avenue. We have a deep.
Or I'm just asking.
That road is not, that nod is, road is not on our list, so if it is, somebody missed it. But we will check.
That road will die.
But even, but even if it's not a town road, and you put a gate on it, according to our ordinances, it still requires.
Unless it's up north of the state highway, it's your own private land.
If it's state highway, it goes under the state, but this is.
Like in my Wood Yard, I can put a gate there, I don't even need to admit, I can do it, the state doesn't say, the town has no coverage on it.
I don't think so.
Yes, it does, right in the ordinance, I checked with the state on it.
Anyway, I, I just saw that, I'm not trying to get the computer and stuff, I'm saying, if one person puts one up.
I have no idea, I, I don't know.
She's a town.
I don't know if the town road, if not, I don't know when it became abandoned or not, or always his or.
I was trying, I, I go by and saw it, it's like shining.
What's that?
If I drove in.
There's the problem with private owners.
The only gates that I've, I've heard controversial since I've been in town is the gate on South Peak that people wish had, they'd never approved. And Carol, I think there's something in our current regulations on new developments can't put in gates and
Right.
This is approved by plan board, but I'm not sure a private property, so we gotta look into it, I, I just don't know.
They need a special exception. They, they can be approved, but I think they just need a special exception for all these.
Okay, so, so the administration's gonna look into that.
Yeah. The town road and the ordinance applies to it.
It was twenty years ago, but doesn't count.
Okay, does anyone have anything else?
The town with one sewer, right down to the end.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.[1796.61]